Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first presentation is for the Elsinore High School. Ron, are you here? Come on down. The microphone is yours. Oh, it's someone. Ah, principal. I see. Aha. I asked who was giving the presentation. Go ahead and go to the podium and we'll go from there.
Hello, I'm Robin Hamilton. I'm one of the principals of Elsinore High School. Thank you so much, Mayor Benoit and council members for allowing us to join you tonight. We absolutely have two special guests. We're going to share some great information about what's going on at our school. I wanted to briefly just share with you that Elsinore High School was one of the 236 high schools that participated in our college kickoff for Riverside County Office of Education. So, we did not do traditional learning today. We did college and career outreach. And so, all of our 10th and 11th grade students participated in the PSAT and that was for free by our district and our College Readiness Block Grant. Our seniors either did the ASVAB and/or did a college application, their FAFSA PIN and their FAFSA ID. Our freshman students did a college survey and also a college report on where they're interested in going and then heard from a guest speaker. So, it was a wonderful day that all of our students participated in and all of our staff wore these shirts to have that focus. I do want to give you an update. I have the pleasure of working at Elsinore High School for the last nine years and in those nine years, I want to tell you just briefly about how amazing our kids are. So, when I started at Elsinore High School as an assistant principal nine years ago, our college-going rate was at 21%. 21% of our kids were ready for a four-year college. So, yeah, let's see. You feel that and that's a little painful when we say that. But I'm proud to tell you that last year, we were at a 41%.
Great.
And that is the work of dedicated teachers, counselors. That is a huge wow for us. We did over a 70% FAFSA rate and our students received many grants, Pell Grants, Cal Grants, and just do amazingly well. But I just wanted to illustrate for you that change in our culture. We also send about another 35, almost 40%, of our kids to a junior college. And so, we have a great outreach with MSJC and I am proud to say that about 10% of every senior class goes on to the military. I myself have a son who served for us, so I'm never prouder than our JRO TC program that has over 160 kids. So...
Including mine.
Wonderful. That's wonderful. So, we are a school that's definitely moving forward and as I said, we just love our college and career readiness. And so, we felt tonight, it would be very important for you to meet a couple of people. One is the lovely Miss Ashley Jimenez, who is at Cal Baptist right now, one of those kids that was A-2G-ready and college-ready. And she's going to share her experience about being in one of our career pathway programs, which is Information Communication and Technology. And as someone who you know if you've been in Woldemar for any amount of time, Mr. Ron Kusianagi, who he and both his wife teach in Lake Elsinore Unified School District. And I'll tell you, Ron is the kind of teacher that every principal dreams to work with. He came to me three years ago and he said, "Robin, we have kids who need computer science." I said, "Ron, I don't have a teacher." He goes, "I know you don't have a teacher and I don't really want to teach it, but I'm going to learn how to teach it because our kids need to have access to computer science." And he really was that gentleman in our district that moved it forward. And I'm proud to tell you that we've had kids pass that AP Computer Science last year and this year at rates that are above national norm, which is huge for us. He also has Cyber Patriot, but he is the can-do guy and I listen to him and do whatever he says. So, he's going to share with you a little bit about our career tech pathway and Ashley is going to share too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Come on down.
Hi there. I'm Ashley Jimenez. I'm 18. I graduated from Elsinore High School this past June. And in the beginning, when I was a freshman at Elsinore High School, I was never even involved in anything. I had no idea where I was going to go in college, but until I reached out to Mr. Kay on my sophomore year, after my friend had told me they did a Canon workshop. So, I said, I went to Mr. Kay and I said, "Hey, I want to be in your class. Can I get involved with all these Canon workshops?" He said, "Yeah, sure." So, I started my first workshop, overnight workshop, at Oceanside with a famous photographer for, he actually does a lot of ads for our photography for the Bruka Company, like Bill Bong as well, I think. But I learned a lot from that first experience and from that workshop, I really developed my passion for photography. And I pursued the desire to go on these workshops and continue it up until my senior year when we did Hismo and we did Joshua Tree and we did some model workshops with a successful model that she is in contact with Canon and she also has her own Instagram that she makes her business off of. So, after that, I really wanted to pursue my passion for that. So, I decided to connect with the professors at CBU for photography. And I ended up going into CBU and making photography as a major and currently in the class for that. So, it was really cool and just from that start, from that experience of being on these Canon workshops, it was, it set the pathway for me for college and I'm loving it so far. So, pretty cool.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for inviting us. It's my pleasure to work with kids like Ashley and then like Mrs. Hamilton talked about, computer science, and it was generated by kids. When I see the kids' passion, then it moves me to do something. And so, everything that's been generated is kids and that's why I got into the business of teaching. And I love it that I get supported by admin like Mrs. Hamilton and then people in our community like Mrs. Moore. We get a lot of things done for the kids in our greater community. Our connection with Canon came about just simply reaching out to them and they loved our kids and so, we just continuously kept growing it and grooming it. And so, we do all these great trips and the major thing about it is giving kids the vision that they can do things outside of just those four walls, so to speak. They're interacting with professionals. Professionals are teaching them and then they're expected to act like professionals as well. So, they conduct themselves in an adult manner as well. We want our kids critiqued by professionals. We want them to hear the hard news that, you know, they just didn't make it and so, they can learn from it and grow from it. So, that's the number one thing. And then, we want to give the kids the vision of going off to whatever it is. It doesn't have to be photography. It's about getting out there and having a vision for your life and that's what we're really after. So, Canon and us have developed it. We now have other companies reaching out to us. There's a company called Aqua Tech, which is an underwater housing company. They're constantly reaching out to us, wanting to do workshops with them.
Okay, we're constantly trying to solve the housing crisis here. Underwater housing, what's this?
Oh, for the camera. You put the camera...
Oh, okay.
That's affordable housing.
We even have a...
They all live in a different world over here. We're in building houses. Sorry, sorry. Grab the track.
We even got Sony reaching out to us and we're developing a relationship with them, LA Galaxy. So, there's a lot of these, the kids are interacting with professionals and they're hearing their story of how they got there. And it's not always that, you know, perfect road. And that's the number one thing. We're hoping that the kids will see that, "Oh, I can do it too." It's not, it doesn't have to be, it's not going to be easy, but it may take some bumps and turns and whatnot, but I can have a vision for my life and that's what we're after. The video I have for us is just a little visual for you guys to see, kids interacting. The whole project was, we brought Elsinore High girls as our models because otherwise, we have to pay, so we cut the cost way down. Well, yeah, that...
Got their parents to sign something.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Parents fully involved. And we also have, gave some girls some chances to be a model, get some great headshots and stuff like that. But it was a three, nine, or day trip and anyway, I'll let the video speak for itself. The gentleman you saw is John Lorenz. He's part Canon and so, he and I have developed this great relationship and the kids have developed a relationship with him as well. So, that's just Elsinore in a nutshell. I don't know if I answered any questions or anything like that.
That was great.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Very good. Any other questions?
They got a little flash slide.
Thanks for the little flash.
Oh, cool.
No, your one.
All right, with that, we'll move on to, I have a proclamation for Purple Heart, Purple Heart City. And Bridget, you brought this forward. Is it here or is it here from the Purple Heart group?
We received a letter. I'm sure that all of us received one. We received a letter regarding that.
I think you're the one. Yeah. So, with this, we're going to declare that we're a Purple Heart city. And one of the things that they want us to work on though is to try and do a parking lot or parking spot with the Purple Heart logo on it. And so, we need to bring that forward, but let it be known that the Council of Woldemar is on the path to do that and that's something we need to work towards and talk about. So, we've got that proclamation. No one's here though from the Purple Heart organization, right? Okay. The next update I have is from the fire department. We have a quarterly update. Come on down.
Mayor Benoit, council staff, citizens of Woldemar, appreciate the opportunity to come up here and present the activities for your fire department for the last quarter. I've been absent for a couple of months. I was out on a work-related injury, so I'm really excited to be back. And I got to report, so has my wife, so that's a good thing. So, for the third, for the first quarter, July through September, we responded to 786 emergency responses within the city of Woldemar. And that's all the stations combined that responded to Woldemar, including Station 61, Station 75 Bear Creek, Station 68 up in Menifee and then Station 94 over on Lake Elsinore. Those are the stations that pick up the majority of the responses, with about 71% of those responses being medical emergencies. And of the 786 responses, about 60% of those are handled by Station 61 here in Woldemar. We had a number of significant activities, significant incidents, one of which I believe was reported on the fourth quarter for 2018, 18, 19, anyway. The commercial structure fire in Mission Trail there at the hideaway. But I wanted to bring that up again because it did happen in July, where the bar caught fire. We responded with five engines, a truck company, a chief officer and a total of 19 firefighters to bring that fire under control. No firefighters or civilians were injured. And because it was a commercial occupancy, there were no citizens displaced. We also responded to hazardous material, that incident at Kaiser facility here on Inland Valley Drive on July 12th. Firefighters arrived at scene and found two patients complaining of respiratory distress and were reporting an unknown chemical odor. We initiated a full hazmat response and our hazmat team came out, made an entry and determined that there was no hazmat in the building. And during the course of the incident, we transported six patients to Inland Valley Hospital. On August 11th, we responded to a residential structure fire on O'Neill Road, where firefighters arrived at scene to find a residential structure fully involved with fire. They contained the fire to the structure, keeping it from spreading into the nearby wildland. Additional engine companies and a water tender were requested and responded due to a lack of water supply in the area. Five engines, one breathing support, one squad, a water tender, a chief officer, for a total of 21 firefighters. And incident duration was three hours and there were no injuries to civilians or firefighters. And then, lastly, we responded to a traffic collision with extrication on Olive Street crossed Orchard on September 12th. Firefighters arrived at scene to find two vehicles involved in a collision, with one vehicle rolled over with an occupant trapped in the vehicle. Firefighters were able to extricate the patient with the jaws of life and transport the patient by ground to Inland Valley Hospital. Incident duration, one hour, three engine companies, a truck company, a chief officer, for a total of 13 firefighters. So, the illustration there of the number of firefighters it takes to handle these types of incidents is pretty profound and that Woldemar definitely benefits from being part of the Integrated Cooperative Regional Fire Protection System in that regard. Other activities, training, 92 cumulative hours for the three-month period on subjects such as structure fires, structure firefighting, air management, which is firefighters managing the amount of air that they carry in the self-contained breathing apparatus and then how to share that air between firefighters if one of them happens to go down and run out of air. Rope rescue, fire apparatus, hydraulics and pumping, forcible entry and so on and so forth. We participated in a number of community events, including the Woldemar City Head Birthday Celebration. It was, my understanding, it was pretty short-lived on our part because of incident activity, but our folks did make an effort to be there and participate. And then, also the movie in the park at Marno O'Brien, the Woldemar Bike Trail ribbon cutting, celebrating the accomplishments of our Public Works Department. And then, Fire Station also hosted several small group station tours. And you guys have to report along with the map in front of you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Great. Any questions, anyone?
I was saying, great job that O'Neill, that I had called then. I went over there and, because since it was so rural and that was all, it was during a holy fire. It was a great job. Given that to that one structure, it could have definitely spread.
Yeah, we had a lot of resources mobilized for the holy fire and we're still able to bring to bear resources for emergencies that happen in our communities that we serve. And part of the Integrated Cooperative Regional Fire Protection System has built-in resiliency in that we have standards, you know, of the scales of quantity. Our resources are stretched throughout the county, so when there is incident in one area, we're able to bring resources up and cover it blind.
Glad you're back.
What's that?
Glad you're back.
Thank you. I'm glad to be back too. Looking forward to it.
Great.
All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, actually, don't go too far. I've got a proclamation here for you. So, this is a proclamation for firefighter public safety is a concern both locally and nationally and homes are at risk of people are at risk of greatest risk. And so, this is a proclamation talking about the, what is this? Debbie, this is the...
Fire...
Fire prevention week. There it is. The last whereas. Yeah, we read that. Yeah, we read that up. The 2018 Fire Prevention Week. Look, listen, learn, be aware. Fire can happen anywhere. Effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. So, this is a proclamation for that. Well, go ahead and give it to you if that's all right.
All right.
All right. Come on down.
Is that Elsinore High talk?
Yes.
Do they have that burn area there for the cameras?
No, they should give it. We were still using Dolce. Thank you. I appreciate that. And there's going to be, there will be an open house hosted at Station 97, Rosetta Canyon and Lake Elsinore, if anybody's interested.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Police Department update, right? Do you have an update for us?
That's correct, Mayor. Late update on that, DNN reported in this evening stating that he had attended a holy fire preparedness meeting.
Okay.
And that we're going to further report until next month.
Very good.
Thank you.
And then, we also had an update from the library, I understand. Come on down.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So, real quick, I just wanted to share with you guys some September stats. We had a little over six Elsinore patrons visit our library in September, which is pretty average for us. Busy with field trips. We had three class visits in September, which was awesome. And I wanted to share with you all a few highlights that we have and upcoming events. So, a little fun fact, 2018 marks the 200th year anniversary of Frankenstein. So, we will be celebrating, just a little fun fact. So, our library, we will be having a teen book club where we will be going, going over Frankenstein. And then, our adult book club will be doing the same thing too. The teen book club will be meeting on this Friday at 3:30 PM. No need to register. Anyone who's interested can just swing by. Our adult book club, that's going to be on October 27th and we will also be discussing Frankenstein. And this Saturday at noon, so 12 PM, we will be having a Frankenstein double feature. So, we will show the Boris Karloff 1931 version and then have like a little 10-minute intermission and then we will watch Bride of Frankenstein right after. So, totally free, interested.
Which is the second of Frankenstein? It's not Young Frankenstein?
No, Bride. Oh, no, 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 no. Not, no Bride of Frankenstein. So, yeah, definitely check us out. And then, aside from that, our very loyal Pacific Coast Paranormal Investigators will be at our library again on October 22nd. That's a Monday. They'll be here at 5 o'clock. They're one of our popular programs. And then, Chess Club we will be having on October 26th, so that's like two weeks. We just started an adult coloring group, so if you're looking to just take like a break from work and just want to color and de-stress and socialize, definitely check us out. We'll be meeting again on October 17th at 1 PM in our meeting room. And we still have sign-ups for our pumpkin decorating contest, which will be on Monday, October 29th at 5:30. And we will be having practice SAT tests in November. November 17th, Saturday, will be starting at 10:15 going all the way through 2:45. And we currently have 24 spots open, so they could either come to the library to sign up or they could sign up over the phone. And that is all I have.
Very good. Great. Thank you for the updates.
Okay, cool.
With that, we're going to public comments and we'll start with Connie Nader. She's here to talk about the library.
Hi, I'm Connie Nader from the Friends of the Woldemar Library, also known as Friends of the Mission Trail Library. And I came to the candidates forum last night and I have to tell you, I was really sad when I left. They were talking about problems getting economic development going here and I realized that there didn't seem to be much enthusiasm for improving our library. And then, I woke up this morning and I thought, you know what? I like living here. This is sun country. They're looking for a label for this area. This is sun country and I really don't want to leave. I want to stay here and work to improve it. And I see an opportunity here. I was an educator and I thought, okay, I hear people say, well, people don't really need a library that much anymore because we have computers, we have cell phones, we don't need books as much as we did. And I think, well, I just need to teach people that a library is about way more than books. You just heard Malina's presentation. That was great timing because did she mention checking out books? I didn't hear it. So, a library today is about small business. I have a former student in Temecula who started a small business. I met with her at the library. The library there has meeting rooms. You can also use them for study groups. And we don't have any space like that. I was at a meeting at the library this afternoon. We had to crowd into the employee break room with the donuts and everything. You know, there just wasn't even room for papers. It's, it really is not sufficient. And I've had the experience of taking my niece to one of the programs and it being full and she had to be turned away. And that's really hard. I have a lot more to say about this, but...
Keep going. You have at least another minute or so.
Okay, great. I just, I want you to know that there are libraries that are offering all kinds of services, like small business services, not just meeting space, but resume writing, score. We could have score representatives come in, if you're familiar with that program. There are libraries that have cafes. There are libraries that have, we have tutoring and when I go in, when that's going on, every table's full. There's no place. We have no juvenile nonfiction section, which is what motivated me to get involved with the library board in the first place because, you know, being a retired teacher and working as a tutor for a while, I realized, wow, you know, kids on a computer, they're going to be distracted by other things. They can't just scan through and find something and go, oh, I'm interested in photography. I didn't even know I was interested in photography. So, it's a different experience and one that I think our children need. Our area has a lower level of education and a higher rate of poverty than Marietta, for example. And Marietta didn't used to have a fabulous library. When I started teaching in Temecula, the library there was a hallway. It was a county library. Now, it's a municipal library. Woldemar has a municipal library. They're very good facilities. You could always have better, but they're very good. And in fact, I'm registered at the Temecula Library because I can't get what I need at the Woldemar Library. And who knows how many other people are making that same trip or going to Marietta. Libraries have theaters, gardens, all kinds of things to offer. And if we want to attract economic development, I think we need those kinds of amenities. Those kinds of amenities will bring investment to our area. So, you know, whatever I can do to help, I have emailed all of you. So, you know, you have my contact information.
Thank you, Connie. And just so you know, I've... And just so you know, I've been working on this, too, and trying to talk with the county and see what their next plans are. I still have not gotten an answer of any substance. So I'm working on that, and I'll continue to push on that, and my meeting with Kevin Jeffries is coming up soon on that.
And that's a tough nut to crack, because when I met with them, I, I learned why. They base the ongoing funding on the square footage.
Right.
So even though they came and saw our library and went, oh my gosh, I mean, they were shocked, honestly, at how, at what we're, what we have. But, but they said, you know what? You're really not going to get anything. So I think ultimately, we do need to work towards a municipal library. I know the city has a lot of needs, and public safety, obviously, number one. And, and I would say things like this may be number two, because we can combine and work smarter, not harder.
Well, another option is when the college comes in, because we can always work with them for the joint use agreement. So it's always something that's on the table, too.
Absolutely. That should be done.
I realize little free libraries aren't a library, but do you support little free libraries?
I'm all for that.
Okay.
But, you know, you can't have a business meeting in a library.
No, but I...
We get it.
But the children have, the children have access to them.
Right.
With no strings.
Can I ask a silly question? What happened to the meeting room? That was added after the library was built. Is it gone? I mean, we had meetings there a year ago. That's so sad, because...
Yeah, we're, we're way off topic, and this is...
No, I was just going to...
We're going to, my attorney has stopped us, so...
All right. I'm sorry.
Move on. Thank you.
It only holds 67 people.
Yeah.
After expansion.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, our next speaker, Kenny? Kenny's? Kenny or Kenneth? You've got Kenneth on.
Kenny, that's fine.
Okay. I wonder if I'll offend you.
As long as you don't call me late for dinner.
There you go.
Okay. During this month, the nation will celebrate Friends of the Library Week from October 21st through the 27th. I would like to congratulate our own Friends of the Mission Trail Library for their dedication and service to our local library. The small group was largely responsible for our library being built and opened in July 28th of 2001 by the County of Riverside. Over the last 17 years, the Friends have contributed more than $51,000 to library programs and equipment, and continue to provide annually for the summer reading program. Thank you, Friends of the Mission Trail Library. Okay, on to some bad news. I will be voting no on Measure AA, because I do not believe it is in the best interest of the city to hurt local businesses and to ask citizens for more. I will also be exploring a ballot measure calling for a forensic audit of all city finances by a Big Four accounting firm. The independent audits that public agencies in California are legally required to obtain frequently fail to flag cases of fraud and mismanagement. It's time the citizens are assured by an independent firm, not hired by city staff or elected officials, that all monies have been, in the last 10 years, properly spent and above board. I will also be looking into a sunshine ordinance requiring more transparency for citizens of this community. It's time the secrecy stopped. Thank you.
Rick Harris, you didn't put down anything? Is this for public comment?
Yes.
Come on down.
He's got the right shirt on.
Thanks for hearing me, guys, tonight. Just had a couple of concerns. My name's Rick Harris. I live at 22860 Valley Vista Circle. So last Wednesday, there was a street light that was knocked over by a car, and it took five days to get, get it cleaned up. So I just wondered, do we have a service in our area, or is that the normal time? Broken glass all over the sidewalk, the poles lighting in the street. Just seemed like a long time.
And this is a street in your neighborhood, and, you know, this light was a, it's probably an Edison light, we might guess.
Okay.
So, and would it be reported to Edison right away, or?
I don't know.
Okay.
So, but it was Oak Canyon and Bundy Canyon on the corner there.
Just for the, the record, Southern California Edison has come in. They've executed an encroachment permit. They're in process to repair and, and replace that, relocate that.
Do you know why it was down the street, though, for five days?
That I don't know.
Okay. Great question. We'll, we'll look into it and see where the, where the delinquents are.
Just that it was broken glass, it was really unsafe.
Sure.
So, and my second question on the streetlight, they're currently owned by Edison?
Most of the streetlights are all still owned by Edison. We're in the process of buying them, and once we've accomplished that, then we'll be a whole lot better off to be able to take care of them and maintain them.
So I was wondering, how many are you going to purchase, and what was the purchase price on the lights?
Do you have it handy yet, or no?
Rick, I can follow up with you and provide you the information.
Okay. And as far as cleaning the street in there, do we have somebody in our location, or? Because there's tumbleweeds and trash all over Bundy for years. So is that something that's new, or?
No, it's, it should be being kept up, but I can tell you, it's been not, not the best this year. We, we know that. We've had other people come in and complain about that particular issue, and it's something that I know our public works have been trying to address recently, so.
Okay. And at the other end of my track, at Valley Vista, I noticed some filter being filled in there, and I heard that's from the fires from Lake Elsinore. So I was wondering, is that hazardous material? Was there anything concerns with the water runoff there?
We're, I'm getting way off topic with my attorney, so I, I'm not, we're not supposed to technically respond during public comment, but as far as generally, we check for that. We make sure that's not what's coming in. It's flood control, moving their flood control dirt from the basin to that basin. But, you know, we're going to do everything we can to help our neighbors. We're going to make sure that we're not getting hurt in the process.
Okay.
We're watching out.
If it's not hazardous material for, for when we walk.
If you can email us and, or email Dan all those questions, and Dan can get back to you, or email us, because you didn't put any information on your card, so.
Yeah, no, I can't, banning kind of late, so.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure I'd get it, and that's all.
All right.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Laura from Sycamore Academy?
Good evening, Mayor Benoit and the council members. I'm here, Laura Gerard, on behalf of Sycamore Academy, and I just wanted to, I gave the city clerk some invites to invite you guys to our annual history showcase. You can stop by anytime between 5:00 and 6:30 on the 15th of November. The theme is triumph and tragedies, and our students have been working really hard on history projects along that theme, so they would love for you to stop by and check out what they've been working on. The other item I wanted to just mention is, I wanted to thank the city staff, because through the work with us and them over the last year, we finally got our school zone in. Yay! We just have to finish up with our final inspection, but it was all, all the work was completed, the signage, the striping and everything last Friday.
Yay.
Yay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joseph Laco?
Mukayo.
Mukayo. Come on down. Big rig parking.
Yes. Yes, my name is Joseph Mukayo. I live at 32732 Durango Court. And to me, there's a problem with folks that are, that own or operate big rigs parking them on the streets, on the, on the residential streets. And right down the street from me, I took a photo of, would you like me to show it to you? Can you see it?
Yeah.
I mean, this is the kind of thing that goes on...
It's actually parked up on the curb, right?
It's on the curb, but you can see, it's, it doesn't enhance the neighborhood, I'm sure you can see. This is on Durango Court, but the, the person who operates this is on Sidney Court, on the corner of Sidney Court and Durango. And the, the big rig is usually parked there at least three to five days a week. And not only is it a problem on Durango, but I noticed on Union, which I take quite often, there's a big rig parked there that's an auto transporter. And I don't mean the kind that have three or four cars. I'm talking about the big ones.
Does it get?
And he's parked on the, the street. Now, a couple of times, I've gone by there where cars are parked on the opposite side of the street, and it's almost like a driving hazard to get around this thing. So I don't know what the city's policy is, but I think it's something we should look into. So I...
We will find out what the policy is, and you're involved.
Have you turned in a form on code enforcement? Have you turned in a code enforcement?
Have you reported it?
I called the code enforcement person here and left a message, and he responded. And I think basically, he said it was since it was on the guy's private property, there's nothing they could do about it. But I'm sure if it was like Newport Beach, you wouldn't see that, whether it was on private property where it was.
If you have access to a computer, you can go online and fill out the online form there.
Okay.
And that gets put into the system for the code enforcement.
So is the city held position on this, or?
Now, I might just add in real quick. Staff's aware of the numerous concerns here. We're looking at an ordinance at some future date to address.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with you, though.
Hey. On the agenda. Go down there.
All right.
Ms. Miller?
Evening. If I have one vote to give, it will be for those who let the environment live. All right. Mr. Moro Pito couldn't be more dedicated to the city of Wildomar. He tries every avenue of communication to awaken the city to the activities and problems, filming the events and coming to the meetings and talking about places that might not be as clean as they should be, and District 3. So I am going to support him, even though he might say some wild things about me. I couldn't have enjoyed the journey more, Mr. Moro Pito. So Mr. Walker has given us incredible traffic, incredible deduction of air quality, and we got to move on to new energy here. So there is no purpose of planning in big box stores on Bundy Canyon. There is no purpose of this, this terrible new thing that I missed, that the Wildomar Hidden Springs 2000, oh, it's Wildomar Meadows General Plan. You don't even have a plan for Bundy Canyon, and you shouldn't. It has its plan. It's a rural country. It doesn't need any tract housing, especially 2,000 of them. Oh, is that the same one that Golden Irvine Company had going a few years ago? Anyway, you voted for Sun Belt, and so I'll give those out in a minute. And appears that Mr. McBride is standing against Mr. Cambrero, and that may be a good thing, because Mr. Cambrero has not helped the Water District see that he should give no, will call permits to any projects out here. The noise levels are just so bad here, from the type of people that you let live in here on their fast racing cars. They have no care about the vibrations that are sent up, pushing the heat with it, you know, and then sending it over to the ocean, making it warmer. And soon it's going to come back to us like Hurricane Michael is coming onto the Panhandle in Florida. So I'm not voting for propositions one and two. I know it makes me look like a bad person, but I don't care. I am voting for six sadly. I don't want to vote for it, but you know, if it's going to let the Scott Road interchange come in here and help with more new projects instead of already existing bridges, if they're going to give money to new Caltrans projects, then I have to vote no on the gas tax. Much as I would like to cut you off from wasting gasoline, I can't. So...
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Your time's up.
Well, that other lady with the library's got so much more time than me. I don't know where you get this clock. Look, you see there, I have 15.
Ms. Miller, your time's up.
Oh, I'm winding it up. But she didn't, because you like her, but you don't like me. My daughter even told me that, I don't care.
We like you, too, Ms. Miller.
Anyway, Joe, you better hurry the heck up and win.
Thank you again. All right. We will go into council communications. Bridgette?
Just want to remind everyone, we have, SWAG has a fundraiser this Saturday at the corporate room, and it's an event, fundraiser for the Social Work Action Group. So they're the group that is helping our homeless individuals. Also, our tree, tree is coming up on October 27th. That's what was well-attended. Marsha and I attended the animal Friends of the Valley fundraiser on September 22nd. I also attended the funeral for Wendy Kreskison. She was a beloved teacher at Elsinore High School. Attended Jersey Mike's. They had a fundraiser for Wildomar Elementary. We had a very large meeting here discussing the homeless issues. Attended RTA meeting, and definitely want to thank them for the new shelter, if you haven't seen it, on the corner of Palomar and Central, Worth, Kurt, and Gutter, that all papered by RTA. Yeah, very nice. Attended the Chamber mixer, which was up at the Courtyard by Marriott in Marietta. They have a rooftop bar. That's really nice up there. Attended the St. Francis of Rome coronation last Friday. And then on Monday, Dustin and Ben and I and Tom attended the League of California Cities to be packed golf tournament. Also had various meetings, and attended last night the candidate forum.
All right. I didn't do nearly as much as Bridgette, but earlier, late September, I attended the Lake Elsinore State of the City. That was good. Let's see. We did the golf tournament on Monday. I was super tired and hot, and no good at golf, but I had a good time. And I have one more thing that I did that was fun. I'll forget it. Oh, I actually made it to the candidate forum last night, but I was literally at the tail end. I watched most of it live, though. So, yeah, we'll leave it there.
Nothing that hasn't been reported.
Tim?
I went to the Fuzzy Bunnies. I saved a lot of Fuzzy Bunnies, Ms. Miller. I voted to get all that conservation land just for you. Just wanted to make sure you knew that. I did vote for that and put it all on here. So I saved some little guys. That's it.
All right. I have a few photos. One, we don't think I had any photos for the League of Cities last year, or this year, and I know we reported on it already at the last meeting, but, you know, when we talk about going to the League of Cities, this is what the majority of the days look like, are the different breakout sessions, where you have a speaker, moderator, and you sit and get interesting information. This one wasn't too benign to our cities, about union groups and management. I would deal with that at AQMD more often, but I just wanted to throw some photos out there of what we were doing in the League of Cities. I also had a very interesting meeting. This was backstage to a meeting that I attended for AQMD. We got 188 speaker cards. We heard from probably about half of them. The other half decided to combine into two groups, and this was regarding the refineries out in Wilmington and Torrance, and some very sticky issues there with, with their particular processing on one of their units, or two of their units, or, and it's just, it's a very complicated process to go through the rulemaking at AQMD, but this is part of the, part of the experience and the, and the joy of it, is going to meetings like this out in Wilmington for my Saturday two weeks ago. But I, I really did appreciate all the concerns and the comments, both from, from the employees and then the owners and operators, and then also, of course, the people that live near these places and the impact it has on their communities. So it was a very good day to hear a lot of balanced information on both, both sides of that. I attended SCAG this, beginning of this month, and the big news there is the CEO there, who's been there for the last 10 years now, Hassan Akara, has taken a new job. He's moving from SCAG, which covers all six, or, sorry, five of the counties in Southern California, moving down to San Diego. So he goes from five counties to one, but obviously, they're probably paying him a little more than we were willing to, or some other reason why he decided to go to San Diego. So he actually gave us this resignation, and moving down there, Gary, you'll get any ideas. They've already got people there that they want to have, so. But, you know, this is a very interesting organization, where you have a regional council that consists of about, I forget the number. I want to say it's over, well, just under 100 electeds that come to that meeting. So we have quite a few people that are always willing to speak, and the meetings can drag on a little bit. But anyhow, I'm also happy to participate in that. Then we had another AQMD meeting. This was actually down in downtown LA. This is from that meeting. It was very, again, a lot going on at AQMD, and then right after that, we had the Clean Air Awards, where I actually was able to present an award to Tesla for their achievements and what they've done for Clean Air for Southern California, and obviously for the whole nation as they move forward with the electric cars. Then I got a chance to go out to the City of Paris, who's having the Paris Fair right now. We have a lot of our kids down there, the 4-H Club, have all their animals down there. But before I got to go to the 4-H Club, I had to attend a, one of their events, which was, this is the, the stacking of hay bales in the back of your truck. Very interesting event. And it was actually a brother and sister, and this is the first time they've ever had a female in the competition at all, as far as they knew for the Paris Fair ever. And so it was a brother and sister and they won. And so they actually, what you have to do is get all those hay bales into the back of the truck and then drive across the white line, which is only about 50 feet in front of the truck. But one or two trucks as they drove 50 feet lost a hay bale. So they didn't qualify. So they had to go back and pick it up. So it was quite an interesting event. Happy to go down there and see that. And so there's also they have the, those are the Farmer's Daughters riding in the parade there, sort of the, as opposed out in the desert, they have the Arabian Princesses. Here in Paris, they have the Farmer's Daughters. So it was a very fun event. Glad I got to go down there. And also we regularly get letters from our constituents. So this is one that comes in pretty regularly, a letter like this. This is all about the 4-H Club and this gentleman has a goat for sale down there. The auction is on Saturday, the 13th. And while I was down there, I was actually able to find his goat and say hi to him. So he's down there ready for auction on Saturday. And if anyone are interested, it's a very great process. You can go down there, you buy the goat or the cow or the pig. It's by pound and then you have to pay another fee to have that animal processed. But then you have meat for a long time. My family, we've done quite a few different ones. My mom actually won half a cow at a 4-H Club years ago. That's an amazing amount of meat. You can't, you did all, we took so much to the shelter. It was amazing. And also my dad used to regularly buy through his funds out in the Coachella Valley. He would buy animals. And so we've had different lambs and pigs. And it's a very fun time to go down there and see what these kids have been doing for a year to raise these animals or eight months in this case for this little guy. And then off they go either to slaughter or you can also purchase them and donate them back to the kids. Sometimes the kids want that too. So there's different options. So I think that's it. All right. With that, we'll go onto the agenda. So for a motion on the approval of the agenda, unless there's any changes to be made, I don't know of any.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, then I have speakers on the consent calendar. I have Kenny Mayes on 1.7, 1.6 with time donated from Mark the Bridges. So go ahead and load up six minutes for Kenny. You know, you don't have to take all six minutes. You know that.
Well, I just might.
Wildemar Marketplace should read Wildemar Marketplace Event Inc., the name by which they incorporated when they filed a registration with the Secretary of State in February of this year. To date, that corporation has failed to file a statement of information, which was required by the Secretary of State to be filed within 90 days of registration. It's now been 232 days. Staff report says that there will be 30 to 50 vendors, yet the letter addressed to the city claims that there's already 51 vendors currently registered. And that letter was received on October 2nd, eight days ago. In their letter, the city, paragraph five, lines three and four, they state, "We even have raffles that we donate to local charities." Our next one is October 13th with the 51 vendors. "We'll be donating to Operation Prom Girl." The statement that they conduct raffles is also mentioned in our special events application and permit form. "In California, charities and certain other private, non-profit organizations may conduct raffles to raise funds for beneficial and charitable purposes in the state once they are registered with the Attorney General's Registry of Charitable Trust. This is to ensure proper accounting of funds received and spent with records being made available to the public by way of the Office of the Attorney General's website." Wildemar Marketplace Event is, Event Inc. is a domestic stock corporation, not a nonprofit. They're also not registered as a commercial fundraiser or fundraising council, therefore ineligible to conduct any raffles per penal code 320.5. Furthermore, Operation Prom Girl, in their registration with the Registry of Charitable Trust, received by the Attorney General's Office, lists one of you council members as a vice president of that organization. This smells like a conflict of interest. The city of Wildemar Municipal Code 17256.030, appropriate venue, permit application. An application for a minor event permit shall be made to the planning director in accordance with chapter 17216 at least 60 days before the event. This application or a special event permit is date stamped and filed September 26th, a mere 14 days ago. This event should be denied on grounds that hastus created disaster in the making with a profit, for-profit corporation that doesn't even know its proper name using our part while stating that they will be conducting an illegal raffle for a charity. If this council does move on this item, at the very least, that council member should have to recuse themselves from participation in this decision. 1.7, Western Regional Council, Regional Homeless Statement of Principles. Why does the city want to adopt this out-of-date statement of principles? It's over one year and seven months old and it paints a rosier picture than the reality of today when it uses 2016 numbers. 2018 point in time count shows the total number of homeless has gone from 2165 to 2316, 7% increase. But the number of sheltered homeless has fallen dramatically by 22 and a half percent in the 2016 to 2018 time period, a shift in where the homeless are living. They're on the streets with a 24.7% increase. Under Regional Commitment Section 2, this document talks about local resources. Local is defined as belonging or relating to a particular area or neighborhood. This does not mean 30 to 40 miles away, as shown in the Lake Elsinore Resource Brochure for some of these services. Line three, provide services that meet the needs of local homeless population. There's that word local again. The statement also mentions 211. "The first homeless shelter to show up there is in San Bernardino." Line six, participating in a point in time count. So many of us know this city doesn't do that very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does staff want to address some of the items on 1.6, including the 30-day provision that was brought up? Can staff address that?
Yeah, the temporary event section, it does say that applications for temporary events need to be submitted to the city 60 days before the event.
Right, but can I speak? When I'm not the vice president, Tom, I'm on the advisory board. If you want me to recuse myself, I will.
Is it a volunteer position?
It's volunteer.
You don't receive any payment?
I do not receive any payment.
You don't need to, you can if you want.
No, I do not receive any payment. So the Wildemar Marketplace, Stacy and her husband Paul are here. This is just two residents that are trying to hold an event that I attended. They had it at the corporate room. The people that were shopping there were Wildemar residents and the vendors that were there were Wildemar residents. She's ran into just one obstacle after another. The second one was planned for during the holy fire, so it had to be canceled. And then the corporate room took away her dates. So we thought, well, maybe we could do it at the park. I mean, what do we have the parks for? Let's use the parks. It's like China, we put in the closet, let's use the parks. This is a great location for it. I know that the city can't do raffles, so if we just approve it with saying you're unable to do a raffle, that really is fine. I don't think the organizer will have any issue with that. But it's actually, and it's just for October 13th. She already has her dates for the Elks Lodge for December and then February. So it's really just a one-time event regardless of what their name officially is.
All right, one other comment from Ms. Miller. I have 1.8.
So you can't talk to me, you can't tell me what Wildemar, what Clinton Village is. Is it already built? Did I miss something? No. All right. If it, if it is an upcoming project and maybe you have a second reading on it, that I can read more about it since I'm so into this election. And whatever it is, is it going to contribute more to this that everyone denies that's in the cities here? I mean, it says that floods are moving in. We don't have a drop of rain. The farmer's almanac says it will be some rain this year. Hopefully, you know how that's going to affect Elsinore. They're getting prepared for it. So you had a fire here too. And I don't, it loosened the soil, so it might come down. But I think it's not coming near the houses anyway, so you were saved from that. But it says here, we need aggressive action on decreasing the greenhouse gases that are going up. And you can't do that if you're annexing more property to put up more housing or commercial or retail. So we need to stop all this development. And we got along this far without major budgets and major need of services, but we can't now because we've outgrown that. But the best thing you can do is just stop that. And so far as the library expansion, maybe it could have a second floor, but does that always mean more parking lots? That's what it always means. So we can't continue to pave paradise. And I'm running out of my time. So I have to look this project up and see what it is. I know you have too many apartment projects going on on pre- lip. Thank goodness they're not moving forward, but for you to say the last time I was here, nothing's going on in Wildemar, why don't you look directly across the street, you know, and it's going on. And I don't know what the rain will do to it, but I pray that there is some. So I have to learn more about this project. And 27 seconds left. You should read that, the dire warning on climate change and believe it. I mean, this Michael hurricane is coming on in on the Panhandle of Florida. So, and this disaster, these two people, they just want affordable housing everywhere. You know, you've got to take buildings you already have. Maybe you're going to have to group homes right in your track housing. What difference does it make? They're out of there if they do something wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
And they could be very contributory to the process of living in neighborhoods.
All right, does the council wish to pull any of the items for a separate consideration?
Yes, I'll pull 1.6 and motion to approve, but notified applicant that raffles cannot be held.
And if it's your desire to move forward this item, another thing that you could add to that motion is waiving the requirement to submit an application 60 days prior.
I cleared that one.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The item moved with all eyes. The rest of the consent calendar, anyone?
We'll move it.
Motion to second, any opposed? So move. All eyes on the rest of the consent calendar. All right. No public hearings, send the general business or 2018, 19 first quarter budget report. James?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have the wrong report in front of me. Here it is. "The first quarter budget report for fiscal year 1819 reflects the Finance Department's continued efforts to provide timely, accurate, and understandable financial information to assist the city council with the decision-making process. All funds have been reviewed in preparing this report. We primarily look at the general fund. There's not a whole lot of activity happening there, but there is some changes that we've made to the non-general fund items. Pretty much during the first quarter, you don't have a whole lot of activity. Most of your revenue comes in early January or in the period of May as related to property taxes, different things like that. So, and what we're seeing so far in the first quarter is just usual where you have more expenditures than revenues, but that's because the money is coming in later on. However, we are recommending a small increase of about $5,400 in the general fund revenue. That's primarily related to encroachment permit fees. And then general fund expenditures, we're recommending a small increase of $5,000 because I took Todd's money last when we did the budget and put it somewhere else and it was my mistake. And so I'm giving Todd's $5,000 back for fire station expenses." All right. On the non-general fund side, we are decreasing about...
Make it clear that it doesn't go directly to Todd.
It doesn't go to Todd. Okay, I'm sorry. It doesn't go to Todd, to Station 61.
There we go.
Yes, it goes to Station 61.
Feel Tom edging over here.
Yes, I'm sorry. Let me clarify that. On the non-general fund side, we are recommending a net decrease of $3.2 million in grant-related revenue. And that's because when we were budgeting for capital projects, we were budgeting, at the time, we were budgeting the whole amount of money that was coming in to do the project. Unfortunately, you can't get a project done normally in one year. So we're decreasing that amount so we can increase it in future years related to those projects. However, we are also recommending a net increase of 1.4 million on the expenditure side because we do have some projects that we didn't fully budget for that are being completed and that are being done because Mr. York is doing an awesome job. So I just got to give him his props. So, and then also in talking with Dan, we decided to break up the grant fund, which was one fund and it had all of our grant capital projects in there. And we're split it up to about six different, six or seven different new funds that specify what the project is, be it like CM AQ, be it related to the special AQMD fund that we get and different other projects, Caltrans funds, different things like that. So that's why the numbers are kind of big, but they primarily relate to just accurately reflecting what's going on with the grants. But that concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Council questions? Thank you for doing that. Thanks for breaking up those funds. I think it shines some daylight on that and let us know what those different pieces were. That's a good way to have that. So I have no comments on this one. Need a motion on this? This is a...
Move approval. Second.
Motion to second, any opposed? So move. All right, on item 3.2, the Community Development Block Grant Consolidation Plan. Matt Bassi.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Just a real quick update. As you know, we, on September 19th, we had our meeting to bring this forward as well as to discuss the fiscal year 1920 block grant program. This is our second meeting for an opportunity for anyone in the public to come up and express their needs. We also on the 19th released the resident needs survey form. The link on our webpage to the county webpage. I have been told that people have been submitting stuff online, but I cannot get an exact count. Hopefully, when we come back in November for the final meeting, we'll have that full number ready to go. But I did receive two hard copy, paper copy of the surveys from folks in Wildemar. So that's great. I'd like to see more come in over the next week. As you know, this 30-day period will end October 22nd, so there's not a whole lot of time left. And again, all that information goes to EDA and it goes to HUD. And that helps with formulating how the block grant money will be distributed, programs that can be funded. So that concludes my presentation.
A link to that survey is on our website.
It is, it's on the main page.
Very good. I have a speaker on this. Kenny, come on in.
Libraries are mentioned nowhere in the survey. Libraries should have been included in Section 8 Community Centers or Section 9 Safety, Recreation and Other. Despite what many think, our little library sees 6,000 to 8,000 visitors every month. This despite the lack of signage telling people that there's a library in town. When it comes to Section 12 Accessibility Needs, removal of barriers to the handicap, there's no place to list what barriers need to be removed, like the lack of the ADA ramp at Marnell Bryant Park Tot Lot or entry to our cemetery on Sundays.
All right. Any council questions on this? It's just received in the file, so we'll receive that. Item 3.2, the Professional Service Agreement with SWAG.
3.3.
Sorry, 3.3.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, my pleasure bringing you this report this evening, requesting contract approval to utilize the Social Work Action Group known as SWAG, who've been assisting our community with the homeless or at risk of being homeless people in the community. As you know, they've been helping out with a, funded by a grant that came from WRCOG. That grant has ended and the six hours of service that they have been providing to the community will cease what has stopped. And we would like to continue that service. It's been a big improvement to the community. It's assisted the police and our code enforcement groups and they're providing a needed service to the community and to the homeless, to the homeless folks. So this grant or this contract is just for three months, a little over $6,000. And why isn't it longer? And why isn't it more hours per week? Well, it's... more hours per week? Well, it's luck. It's all due to resources. If we have more money, we can continue this type of thing in the future. But we'd like to extend it for at least three more months at the current six hours per week. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. I have one speaker on the side. Kenny Mays?
Despite assurances at the December, at the September 25th meeting that they are registered, this group is still not shown as being registered with the Registry of Charitable Trust. Till that issue is resolved, there should be no contract with this organization. Charitable organizations that are not registered with the Attorney General's Office cannot operate or solicit funds for charitable purposes in California. Continuing to operate can result in fines as well as cease and desist orders from the Attorney General. This city's failure to ensure that all nonprofits that this city conducts business with are properly registered with the Registry of Charitable Trust has got to stop. The people of this city deserve better accountability from its leadership.
Thank you for your comments. Council comments, questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I attended a meeting that was held at the police station, and the police officer told the group he had contacted this guy himself, and they have turned in their forms. It does take a while to update, so they have turned in all their required forms.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. They're on the site. It's just pending. All right. Questions or comments?
I mean, this is a great group. This is really a one-stop shop for individuals that are homeless or on the verge. This is our answer. We need SWAG. We need SWAG more than six hours a week, and longer than three months, but I'm totally forward to doing this right now. And then, like I said, there's a fundraiser for them this Saturday, so, and they'll be doing a raffle.
All right. With that, I'll look for a motion?
Still moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. City manager's report. Gary?
Thank you. Just a few comments this evening there. State of the city address be conducted, led by Mayor Ben Benoit on Wednesday. That's October 17th. Starting at 5:00, the presentation at 6:00. So, I look forward to seeing everybody attend that event. Following that, we trunk or treat out of Marne O'Brien Park. That'll be on October 27th, and there's still time to register your vehicle if you'd like to participate in that. That's quite a heavily attended event, so I look forward to seeing you all out there. We will be coming forward here shortly with requests from the community to participate in the photo contest for the calendars. We did that a couple years ago. It was met with a lot of success and enjoyment, so we'll be doing that again. Those flyers will be coming out shortly. The election will be held on November 6th, so we encourage everybody to vote. Coffee with the Mayor will be held on Monday, October 15th, and is, I believe that's at the Bean on Platoon, Keith, at 5:00?
At 5:30, right?
5:30. Okay, so, it'll be Coffee with the Mayor at the Bean Monday, October 15th. Library expansion, yes, we are looking into the situation with that. In reading the county's DIF program, there, there are plans for expansion in this region. Include, include a New View, a new library in New View area, and one in Temesco Canyon, but there's not, no plans for anything down in this area. So, we will be looking into that need and working with the proposed college, see what kind of access, accessibility and partnership we can do with the community college. And it sounded like from the resident that one of the needs is community, is having meeting rooms for some of these activities. And here at City Hall, we do have a community room upstairs, the Santa Rosa Conference Room, and you're welcome to use that for various, various meetings that you like to conduct. So, that is available for the community to utilize. The community cleanup is on November 11th, so that'll be before our next council meeting.
November 3rd.
November 3rd. Thank you. Before our next council meeting. So, that community cleanup will be held at Elsinore High School on the west side of the freeway, and everybody on the east side of the freeway, bring all your no-longer-needed belongings to Reagan Middle School. And that'll be at, right, 8:00?
Reagan Elementary.
Reagan Elementary. Oh.
The school.
I thought it was. Yes, Reagan for the, for the east side. So, I look forward to seeing everybody there. We always get a lot of participation, especially at Elsinore High School. That's always a well-attended event. And that concludes my, oh, one more item. We're thinking, we're looking, we'd like to hold a special city council meeting on October 24th to go over the cannabis activities.
This is what the planning commission just heard last week?
Got that from planning commission last week, and it would be timely to bring it to council on the 24th of October.
Are there council members that, I know Marcia can't be there, but the rest of my members, can we be there on the 24th for a special meeting? All right. Get four of us. There you go.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Any future agenda items, anyone? Not hearing anyone. I will adjourn the city council meeting. We'll go into our cemetery meeting.